All right, I've got seven o'clock, so let's get this show on the road. Let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America.
And to the Republic. For which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, approval of minutes. We've got the special council and budget finance committee meeting on December 9th. Is there a motion to approve?
So move, Mike.
I'll second, I read them. No favor? Uh, we need to, well, I'll, yeah, just approve minutes, I think we can do. Mary Lou, John Coker, I'm an eye, John Wall, Mike, okay. Opening remarks, I have none. Unfinished business. PTO policy review and approval. Mary Lou, I still haven't seen what I was asking for from Carl Sander. Has he sent anything that we can review?
I sent you my request to him after the last town council meeting, asking him for the PTO policy, the holidays. I sent that to you yesterday.
Right, but that didn't discuss PTO or holidays or extra vacation days.
There are no extra vacation days.
Well, the PTO policy implies extra vacation days. We wanted to know the costs of each one of those things, so we could consider it as a whole.
I did, Bill, do you, Bill, do you have any information on that? Because the way Carl said he, as you saw, he gave us the blessing on it.
That's what I have, yeah, that, that, that I see it as blessed, I know you do, and I know Mark Swistick does, but I don't know whether there are any other questions that they have, so.
Yeah, I wanted to know what the cost of each one of those particular parts of the package was. The change in PTO, the change in extra holidays. Um, you know, we have a fiduciary responsibility to the citizens of this town, and I don't feel like we can, we can do that without knowing what this is going to cost.
Bob, I requested exactly, I mean, I said John Wall wants to know what the tax implications are, I spelled all that out, and that's what Carl came back with. I did email him as soon as I got your note yesterday at about two o'clock, and said, is there any other information? I did not hear back from him.
Well, I think, my, my particular feeling is that we need to push this off till the next meeting, till we have that information.
For the PTO policy?
Uh, well, PTO, extra vacation days, you know, I think the whole package. We need to know what this is going to cost before we approve it. I mean, we gave people a substantial raise last year in April, and we're looking at a raise again this year.
No, 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 wait a minute, no, wait a minute. Last year, you told all the employees that you got 1.9% on your social security, so we gave them 2%, except the outliers, where the survey showed they were really not even in a competitive mode. And we said we would take care of that this year.
Right, and I think we should do that, but we need to know what it's going to cost.
Okay, we do know what that is, what those salaries are going to cost. Then, this year, you and I, on our social security, and the rest of the councils, old enough too, got 5.9%.
Mm-hmm.
And so we're asking overall, except the outliers, to have 3%, and some improvements in holidays, and, and that's it. We're not competitive.
I think we can look at salaries, but holidays and the rest of it, we need to know what it's going to cost before we do it.
I can, I will get those numbers from Carl. I don't know that he's in the office this week, I don't know if Bill knows, but I think we should move forward on the salaries. We do know the cost of that.
Okay. All right, so I, I'd make a motion that we hold off on the PTO policy, the holidays, the rest, basically the benefit package.
Okay.
That would be my motion.
I'll second it. Coker?
Discussion.
The only other thing, Mayor, was we were asking you for that PTO policy, you had some changes you made to it, I don't think we've seen the revisions yet.
John, there is no, first of all, the PTO policy we sent you had the bank part in it. Until we decide what Dr. Lema said, you know, he'd rather not have that in there, so we were going to take it out. That's the only change that policy is. And so you have that version.
Anytime I've ever, anytime I've ever been involved in trying to put a new policy in place in any organization I've ever belonged to, Mary Lou, I've always had a copy of the final, whether it's an organi-
I don't have a final one, because you guys wouldn't agree to it, so it's, it's, it's there. All we have to do, and Mark and I can do it very quickly, is remove the bank part. That's the only thing that changed in the language.
Let's get that out, let's get, oh, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
My screen is frozen, but that's okay.
You can, we can hear you.
Taking a good picture, I like that picture. Uh, anyway, um, yeah, let's get that, and let's get all the, the numbers for what we've asked for. I think I sent a letter to the HR committee, spelling out exactly what we needed. Let's forward that to Carl, let's get those numbers back to us.
I, I didn't, I didn't see a letter to the HR committee.
Well, that went out, probably it went out a month ago. I can send it again.
Okay, that'd be great, thank you.
Well, I will send you back that letter, saying what I needed to see. Is there anything else anybody else needs? I think I CC'd everybody on the council with that letter also. Is there anything else anybody else needs to see?
Well, again, on that PTO, I thought there was, you know, you talked about the banking, the hours, but I think there were some other language changes that we talked about. Just minor ones, but some changes.
No, there wasn't, and we had the blessing of the employment attorney back in October.
Yeah, for the form, but again, the numbers we need to look at.
We can, we'll, we will get that, and I will get, I'll send out the policy again, and we'll mark through where the bank statement was, but if it looked okay in the December meeting, and that's what you wanted, because that's what you said in the HR meeting, you thought you could live with the PTO policy as long as we didn't bank the hours.
Well, and, and we need to look at the numbers.
Okay.
Yeah, those are the two things, okay.
I can do that.
So I would propose that we skip the PTO policy slash review slash approval, and the holiday schedule for town employees, because we need to know what that's going to cost, and we can skip down to the 2022 salaries. So on the 2022 salaries, I think we've all gotten that document? And Mary Lou, you want to summarize that from HR, just?
Sure.
Is there a motion and a second by Coker on the benefit package?
Uh, well, we, we basically-
We postponed it off until the next town council meeting in January. That was, that was a motion, wasn't it, Bob?
Yeah, that was a motion, okay. All right, so, Mary Lou, are you in favor of that motion? You're right.
Yes.
I'm in favor. John Coker?
I'm in favor.
John Wall?
Yes.
And Mike, you're in favor, all right. All right, so 2022 salaries, Mary Lou?
So, and I know everybody has the ordinance. I, I'm not going to go by name, I don't think we should do that, but for the town marshal, they would be at 3,001 one bi-weekly, the sergeant would be at 3101 hourly, the deputy would be 2749. There's four deputies. The next deputy would be 2576, the next deputy would be 2474, the administrative assistant in the police department would go to 1809 an hour, that's one of the outliers, and the part-time dispatcher would go to 1350 an hour, and that's one of the outliers. Under the street, the superintendent would go at $31 an hour, and the street laborer would be at 21. For the water department, the superintendent would go to 31. Water assistant was, is a promotion, he's passed all the necessary tests, and he's qualified, would go to $23 an hour. The water secretary, which amounts to 40 hours a week, it slipped between two employees, was another outlet, outlier, and it would go to $19 an hour. Did I say the deputy clerk yet? Okay, that's an outlier, that says, was at the top of the page, so I apologize, and that would go to 2157 hourly. Do you have all the paperwork on that?
And those percentage increases were 3% for many, and then more for some, right?
Right, and the more for some, one was a promotion, and the other, the other one, two, three, four, were to take care of the outlier, outliers from the survey.
Okay. Any questions about that?
My number says $48,769.
That's the cost of the merit, those are merit increases, basically, right?
Yeah, they're total increases, or any kind of, yes.
And Bill, the town can afford that?
We can, we, we'll budget.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I've got a couple of questions. You know, philosophically, we started off, I forget how many months ago, I want to say it was in September possibly, when we finalized the 3% across the board, we had a resolution at that meeting, I've got it somewhere here, where we said we were going to go with roughly a 3% jump, and then take a look at the outliers. In my mind, the outliers always were the deputy clerk, the police dispatcher, I believe, the street department laborer, and I think we looked at the assistant police dispatcher as well. So we had about a 3% over across the board raise in our original agreement, that was approved at that time, just as a, I think as an overall resolution sort of a thing. And this latest proposal is significantly different than that. I, I have a problem with the disparity in some of these amounts in terms of the percentage increases. I think if we're going to have an across-the-board 3% raise, part of the reason that the employees were miffed last time was we had, you know, a smaller increase, and then we had some people in some departments got less than others, and we're, we're right back doing that again, and I think that's a problem. The street department laborer was one of the outliers, and I see we're putting him up at 9.3, as to, you know, that's significantly different than the 3%. But the water department laborer going up 18%, I think is unconscionable, I just do not see that as making any sense at all. And then we've got the water superintendent going up significantly differently than the street superintendent. So I know there, it seems like we're trying to equate those two positions, but I think these percentage increases at the bottom end of this chart are just a little too much to swallow for my taste.
John, if you remember, the survey showed that the water superintendent, uh, where, it was underpaid on the last survey, and we did not address that, and, um, the, the street su, the street laborer is not an outlier, but he's been with us for about, I'm thinking 10 years or more, and it was, he's one of the ones that we just felt that we should make that improvement, in fact, last year you, you agreed to it, and the improvement didn't happen, I guess, to his satisfaction. The water su, the assistant water superintendent, which is what, uh, the water laborer is going to be, is a promotion. He has all the licensing, that's what we need, you have to have some kind of program, Greg's, none of us are young, but Greg and them are moving on up too, and he is the same as what Greg was, he's, he's being trained to fulfill Greg's position, and that's why, he's not being treated any different, he took all the tests, that's historically, that's what the water department has done, is somebody passes a test, um, you, he gets rewarded for it, it's a different position. It's a position we didn't-
Actually, Mayor, in my, in my estimation, two things relative to the water group that you're talking about. Number one, the water superintendent, that if you're comparing a water superintendent with a full-blown water department to administer, including multiple employees and, and water treatment plants and that sort of thing, as our comparison, it's a little difficult for me to swallow that kind of a jump on the water superintendent, when it's not the same as what a duty would be for somebody in that role. Our water functions are significantly different than a water superintendent that's running a water plant and has multiple employees to supervise. We're talking about a two-man operation here, which is not necessarily the same as what we see on that salary survey. The salary, the water department laborer, I grant you, is, he's done a good job of taking his certification tests, and I'd be in favor of some sort of a nominal bump based on that, that he's had these certifications, you know, much the same as like a policeman that gets some specialized training, or, you know, in the case of the water department superintendent, he, he, or the streets, excuse me, the street department superintendent, he does the MS4 work, he does things with, um, you know, other agencies, so there are, I grant you that there are times when someone should be rewarded for going out and getting some additional training, but to go, you know, this individual got a half-year bump when he first came in, the first year he was here, got a bump the next, you know, during everybody else's bump, got another bump this prior year, and now we're going to take him up 18 and something, that, that's just unconscionable in my mind. If we want to give him a $500 bonus for getting his certification, I don't have a problem with that, but I just cannot justify giving most of our employees 3%, and giving somebody else six times that increase, that, to me, is just unconscionable.
Well, we have gone over this at the HR meetings, and Mark and I, and Bill, and Georgetta have presented what the area is paying, which is our competition, we have talked all along about that, so this isn't any surprises to anybody, and most of the council people here, if you, I take minutes, I print them on what we've talked about, and I feel very strong, I believe that, and I think Mark has told me this, the assistant water superintendent could go to Michigan City right now and make more than what we're offering in this increase.
Mary Lou, the responsibilities of an assistant superintendent in a water department, the size and magnitude and complexity of the Michigan City Water Department is not comparable to what we have in our town.
I'm talking about a laborer at the Michigan City Water Department that has passed these certifications, and we went over in the HR meeting about three months ago, what they are different steps, it's like, uh, it's like a civil service, so if the more skills you have, the better you're paid.
To go back to our, our super, our, our salary survey, the average for the survey data for the water department laborer was $15.19. You're talking about going to $31, that's twice what a water laborer was making in the salary survey.
I mean, 23, John.
Sorry?
23. 23, not 31.
I'm sorry, 30, 23. Okay, so it's not twice, but it is significantly different than $15. I just, I just, it seems to me like we've had problems before in terms of salary compression and comparability and equity in our town employment compensation practices. We tried to solve that problem earlier in the year by doing a salary survey, coming up with some science behind the numbers that we come up with, and made some agreements back then, and here we are, you know, in December, looking at completely different rates, completely different raises, and in my estimation, just very, very heavily skewed on a couple of individuals, which is what we were trying not to do.
Mary Lou, can we share the information that the HR committee had, the present employees, what the proposed raises are, and the rationale for those with the council, so that we can bring this back at the next meeting and have a discussion?
Bob, I have given all of that information to everybody.
Yeah, can you share it again, so we can bring it back at the next meeting?
Sure.
Bob, Mike, if I may, just, you know, we're talking about a couple of individuals here, I'd like to see us, um, take an approach where we act on the vast majority of employees now. If we have a couple of individuals that we'd like to take a second look at, I'm okay with that, but I would say that we should still approve majority of this compensation tonight, rather delay it into going to next year, because I think we can deal with the exceptions that we're talking about, we're talking about one or two individuals, I believe, um, that are in question, and I would see deferring those until the next, next meeting, but I would like to see us act on the vast majority of our, of our employees today.
How about if we give the 3% raises across the board, and then the outliers, Mary Lou could share that information and the rationale for them, we'd bring that back to the next meeting?
I, we, the outliers are nothing new, it's the ones that I named are all from last year, where we wouldn't give the increase all at once. I think if we go along with what Mike said, we should table the street and water department, that's, that's the ones you, that John disagrees with, John Wall does, and the rest of them, we're all, we've talked about it for a year. I, I'm sure you all read the paper, you've listened to how hard it is to find people, to attract and retain them, and we're planning, the HR committee, which Dr. Lema, you participated, and we're planning on doing a survey in the beginning of 2022, we want to look at that again, because things have really gotten out of hand with the inflation, so. Um, I, I would go along with Mike's proposal, but leave the street and water department out of it right now, until we can go back and fix it, I don't like doing that, um, but I think that's, the street superintendent, street laborer, streets, uh, water superintendent and water assistant, but not the regular water department clerk, water secretary. For those four individuals, because the other outliers were all ones that we discussed last year, and we said we would take care of them this year.
We really only had four outliers, if I recall. It was the administrative deputy clerk, the police dispatcher, the water, the street department laborer.
He's not an outlier, he never has been, if you look at the survey.
Well, I'm talking about what we defined as outliers, Mayor. We had, I think we had four individuals that were in the outlier.
The four individuals were the deputy clerk, the dispatcher, the administrative assistant, and the water secretaries, those were the outliers.
Okay, so why are we adjusting significantly these other ones that weren't the outliers?
Because the survey shows that they should be, one is a promotion.
We, we made all that, this is what worries me a little bit, it seems like we're reconstructing the wheel all over again. We went through all this effort to do all these studies, and come up with percentages, and come up with the outliers, and now we've identified two or three other individuals, and we've skewed them heavily, way off of our original plan, and that's what's bothering me.
Well, first of all, John, things change in a year now. You know, you could have had all these people leave, and we decide, well, we're going to have to offer more.
I just, I hate it when you go to such hyperbole, Mary Lou. What you're talking-
John, would you like me to talk, or you just want to run the whole program?
Well, no, I'm just telling you-
You've been in every HR meeting except for last-
And then you want to go back and do hyperbole for another 10 minutes. I'm talking about the four or five people that you've got skewed heavily on these percentages, it's just way beyond what we talked about all year.
It's not way beyond.
I mean, let's get everybody else's opinion, if everybody else thinks it's okay to start knocking around double-digit increases for two or three individuals, when you're only giving 3% to everybody else, if that's the philosophy that we chose, choose so to choose as an organization, then we need to make that explicit, because I don't understand it. I thought the outliers were the only ones where you're going to adjust differently than everybody else, and here we go again with this heavily skewed situation.
So you don't think if somebody during the year got a promotion, that we should, you think we should ignore it? Because things change in a year.
Well, if you're talking about the water laborer, I do not think that his duties have changed significantly enough. I'll grant you that he's been certified, but I don't think his duties have changed significantly enough to warrant an 18.6% raise, number one. Number two, when you compare that individual to some of the other individuals in the town, which all of our employees will do, Mary Lou, they will look at what you've done, and I think you're going to de-motivate other individuals when you do that, one. That's what we tried not to do when we set out a business philosophy on compensation earlier this year, we all sat down in the HR meetings, we came back to the town council, and we said, our philosophy was to be, if I recall correctly, our philosophy was to be, we wanted to be above average, but we wanted to be reasonable, and, and I think what, what you're proposing here is no longer in that category.
So do the other council people feel that way?
I've already stated my opinion.
Okay, John, Coker?
Oh, I, I agree with Mike, I think we ought to give at least the vast majority of these approved, and then if there's difficulty or issues with a couple of these departments, and look at those, and, uh, get it in a little deeper, and try to resolve it, but, uh...
And we, can I, and I interject, because I'm the one who has to do the, do the payroll. If what the, the, uh, will of the council is to give the two street employees 3%, and look at them, the two water employees 3%, and look at those two, and then give everybody else exactly what sits on the page.
Which would be the outliers, the four outliers that Mary Lou just said.
Yeah, yeah.
That would, police dispatcher, water department office manager, administrative assistant slash deputy clerk, administrative assistant slash police dispatcher, correct, Mary Lou?
Yes, yes.
That would be a motion I would support.
You want to make that motion?
I do.
Is there a second?
I want to understand it a little better. You're saying that the four that we're going to-
Well, let's get a second first, John.
I second it.
Okay, go ahead, John.
Just tell me which ones you are not adjusting tonight, and what rates you're doing on the ones you are adjusting tonight.
The only ones that the rates will, are not the same on what you see would be the street and water, the superintendent and, uh, of each group, and the laborer and the water assistant would get 3% until you get my explanation for it next month with Carl Sander.
And Mary Lou, what are the increases for the four outliers?
I don't have the pers, I, I send every day that spreadsheet, but, um, the deputy clerk would go up $1.96 an hour, the administrative assistant in the police department would go up $2.18 an hour, the part-time dispatcher, $1 an hour, and the water secretaries, $1.10 an hour. I can get the percentage.
And these were the changes that we agreed to make last year, but we only made half of the changes, because we wanted to base it out a little more, right?
Correct.
Am I correct?
Correct.
I don't see the, I don't see the water secretary on the sheet that I'm looking at. What was, what was their percentage?
I, I just meant, I'll go get the percentage, hold on.
Because right now, the police dispatcher part-time is going up 8%, the water department office manager is going up 6%.
That's what I just said, but I gave you it in dollars.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yep. Now, we've got the administrative assistant deputy clerk going up 9.9%, and administrative assistant slash police dispatcher going up 13.7%. That's what my, that's what I have in front of me.
I can, I can get my paperwork, those are the na-
That's correct, Bob. Okay, so though, so it's 8%, 6.15%, roughly 10%, and then 13.7%.
Right, yep.
And then, are we, are we considering that this is the last time the outliers get a different adjustment than anybody else?
This should get them up to what we considered to be, I think we looked at median incomes when we, when we did these numbers.
I think that's the intent, John.
What's that, Mike?
I said that's the intent. Rather than kick, can, rather than kick the can down the road, let's, let's deal with those adjustments now, and we will then measure our compensation relative to market as we go forward. But otherwise, if we defer on this or change it, we're just going to be facing this issue again down the road.
Yeah, I have no desire to face it down the road, Mike, I just want to understand what our basic philosophy is, so we're not doing the same thing next year. So essentially, these four individuals that are going to get bumped, these percentages, will not, will be back to the nominal percentage that everybody else gets next year.
Right.
Well, John, we plan on doing a survey, because we need the science again, and based on the inflation and where the rest of the world's going, we might not be at the nor, because, uh, the chief just texted me, Laporte School Systems got 7%, was it seven, Mark? The Laporte Police got 17% this year, the office people got 5%. Michigan City-
But Laporte and Michigan City are not our, our, our benchmark, we should be looking at Westville, Chesterton, communities our size.
Right, we can do that, but what I'm trying to get across to all of you is that there are different things going on in the world right now than there was two years ago.
Yep, yep, and our job is to make sure one's being-
I don't disagree at all with you, Mary Lou, from a general philosophical point of view, and I think that's why, when we look at whatever percentage increase we want to give our employees- give our employees, we need to be cognizant of all those things, and I don't disagree with you at all. I guess as long as I understand that these pretty significant raises that we're giving this year are a one-off in order to get the outliers where they belong, because we're going to have to revisit this whole discussion whenever we decide to on these other four individuals, whenever you come back to us. So, just so we're on the same page, the philosophy will be in coming years, unless we find an outlier or somebody that's really not making what they should be making, that we're going to try to be more consistent across the board with all the employees in the future.
Yep.
Yes.
Any other discussion? All right, there's a motion and a second. Mary Lou?
Aye.
I'm an aye. John Coker?
Aye.
John Wall?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Okay. We did that. Good job.
No, you're not done.
Oh, no. What do we need to do, Bill?
Ordinance. This is an ordinance, so I have a second reading.
Can it even be an ordinance without all the other employees involved?
Well, this is Chris. I was going to suggest that if you pass an ordinance, you're going to need to amend that ordinance based on your other determination, so it's just a matter of what you intend to accomplish tonight.
I would hope that we pass an ordinance, because if anybody's ever done payroll before, to do retro is a real pain, and that's when we happen to make mistakes. And I think it would be nice if the employees aren't always having to wait for us. I do have to say, as much as we have talked about in all the HR meetings, and Dr. Omay's been present, and Mark and I, and Bill, and Georgetta have done a lot of legwork to show what we were doing and what was going on, but I am disappointed that the other four weren't accepted. But we'll, I'll go back and we'll work on it, and I'll get Carl Sender to bless, or to come up with the numbers for the PTO policy for the additional holidays, and we'll talk about that in January. I'm sure I'll, I'm sure I'll have the numbers ready, and I'll also be ready for, for the meeting for the four people.
So, Chris, what do we need to do with this ordinance?
Back to the process, Chris. Can we just authorize Bill to pay the rates that we just discussed on everybody but the four, and then wait to pass the salary ordinance like we've done every year for the last couple, three years?
Yeah, I think that you can do that, but I do think, I just want to caution, and to make Bill's life easier, number one, but more importantly, to make it easier when he has to answer to the Board of Accounts, you have to get that ordinance in place. So you can authorize, and he can be on solid ground to do that, so that it accomplishes what you want, which is to compensate the employees, but you definitely have to make a concerted effort to get that ordinance done and fill in the blanks for him, because the State Board of Accounts is going to want to see that.
One of the issues, though, we have to, you know, the salary ordinance has, has to be passed for really, for the, also for the- The clerk treasurer's position. I'm happy to work at the amount, but I'm not going to be here that long, and you cannot change, and you cannot change the council. The council has not asked for a raise, but you, you know, and I think that we really should be fixing Chief Swistick also. So what I'm suggesting is that you, that you do pass this on second reading with the understanding that we will, because, because we can change anybody's salary. We can double the street superintendent's salary, you know, it's the will of the council in mid-year and pay him, there's no, there's no restriction on that, but, but we have to, we have to have something in place at the, at the end of this meeting, I'm hoping. So, I mean, I think we should be passing it on second reading with the understanding we'll look at those four, not the four outliers, but the four employees, street and water. But my suggestion, I think the way the motion was, that they would, they would get 1.03 times what they were making now, which is easy computation. And then if they, if we agree to give them more, then that will be, that will be discussed in January and February.
So that's different than what you're actually, your salary ordinance per se, Bill?
Well, you have to, you have to pass, you have to pass the clerk's salary, and, you know, and if you don't want to do that, that's, that's fine, but I think you're going to have a tough time finding somebody to work for what I've been working for. So I, so my suggestion would be, you cannot do that during the year. You cannot do that in 2022. You can give everybody a raise in 2022. I mean, you can give the outliers, and you can give the deputy clerk a bigger raise than we agreed to tonight, because she is not an elected official. But, but you have to do, you have to do this.
You have to change the, you have to change the-
You have to pass something with the understanding. I mean, employees are kind of used to the fact that they don't get, they don't get everything, but it would be lovely if we could at least tell the police people that their wages, as they've seen them, will be exactly what we've got on this sheet of paper.
But to pass an ordinance, then, we would have to have a revised sheet three of three, would we not? Even if we decide to pay 3% to the water and street guys, we would still have to have a revised sheet number three.
Yeah, I could.
We're going to pass this tonight.
Yeah. Yes, this is Chris, and I think you and Bill are saying the same thing. The signed version that you guys will execute will reflect what you're discussing in the motion and the second that's under consideration. So, the one that's before you, that will be amended based on what you guys vote on.
Right.
So I suggest that we change the clerk treasurer's salaries, because we cannot change it in the middle of the year.
What's that salary now?
He makes 34. Bill, what is it, 34?
Yeah, 32,468 or something like that. It's 1318 every two weeks instead of 1770.
And, and Bob, in our meetings, remember, I went to Burns Harbor, we, their average thing, all of those Burns Harbor, Westville, Portage, I can get, we did that in the HR meetings over two or three months. Most of them, the average was at about $58,000 a year. We all know that Burns Harbor has a bigger budget because of the steel mills, and so we felt that if we came in around, was it 42, Bill?
46.
46, that that would be, we could find and recruit somebody for that.
We're also hoping to bring in a town manager that will bring along with him or her a fairly substantial salary, and hopefully be able to take over some of the responsibilities that Bill's been doing. So I have to, we have to weigh all these things.
Right.
Is that, I don't see on that page three the proposed clerks, unless I'm missing it.
Page one.
It's on page one?
Page one is a range, because we can't, we can't, we can't fix a dollar amount.
So that 1770 is your 46,000, Bill?
Yes. But there is a town manager on page one down.
One of the issues I have with the clerk treasurer getting raised this particular year is, we're at the mercy of the Republican Party for whoever we wind up with in the coming year, assuming Bill does leave. If Bill does not leave, I guess I have a different outlook on it, but if we get someone that's not qualified and doesn't do much of a good job for us by virtue of whoever they appoint, I don't know that I want to reward them with a big bunch of money.
Well, we don't have, we can set the, set the range, but we don't have to give them the top range. We can, you know.
We set, Mark and I, and Bill set the range. I want to say-
There is no range on page one. It's, it's got a tight dollar figure.
It cannot, it cannot be a range. I covered that with the State Board of Accounts.
That's right, yeah. Bill is correct. Once you set it, it is set.
Yeah.
For the year.
Highly risky.
Yeah, if we get somebody that they appoint that's not much of help, I don't know that we need to be paying them $46,000 a year. I mean, it's different when somebody, you know, is elected to the position based on what the salary is, and they understand the position, and we all understand who we're compensating, but we're really in kind of a, I'd almost rather put that decision off a year. If Bill's comfortable waiting a little bit, or if we want to give Bill something to reward him in the coming year, I don't have a problem with that at all. But to jump it up now for somebody we don't even know who it's going to be, and I just.
I would agree with you, John.
All right, so.
So, just so, we discussed this in November, and I've got out my minutes. We discussed this in December also, was, and I do have from the lady in the State Board of Accounts, Bill is absolutely correct, like Chris said, that we have to do something now.
If we're going to do anything, yes.
If we're going to do anything. The committee was provided with last month's meeting what surrounding towns were paying. Burns Harbor paid 61,728, Westville 55, Porter 52,999. I, we made a motion to start the salary at 46,000. It was seconded by Bill, and the unanimous vote in favor. So I, I would like, if you, I'm not, I think you're right, we're not going to be able to find anybody. If you look at the survey, and I don't disagree with what John says, but we don't know what's out there either.
Right, so we're, if we leave it as it is, and we decide we want to give somebody a bonus next year because they're a star, we can do that.
I don't think you can give the town clerk a bonus.
Not a bonus, but we could increase their salary at the next year, right?
Yeah.
Right.
I'd be more comfortable giving Bill something this year, something on the amount, and then addressing this big jump after we see who we wind up with, because you're going to be stuck with whoever they appoint for two years, at a minimum, I guess. If they run again and get elected, that's a different story.
You want to make a motion, John?
Well, what are you at now, Bill? 13, 13, 13, 20?
1318 every two weeks.
I recommend we leave it where it's at, what we said in the ordinance, that we give him 46.
Well, I guess that's up to everybody. I would vote for-
Well, you're going to have to come up with compromise, because, because, because you can't, you cannot pass it, you cannot pass it without unanimity, so.
I'd go 1,400 for Bill bi-weekly, if that's what it is, rather than the 1,770. That gives Bill a little something, and then we can address it during the year, depending on who the-
What's Bill getting now, 13, what, Bill?
1318.
1318?
32, which is $32,000 a year.
Going up to 14 to be a 6% raise for Bill.
All right, so is that, is that a motion, John?
Yeah, my motion is that we give the clerk 1,400 instead of the 1318 he's making now, and instead of the 1,770 on that sheet.
And Bill, you said this has to be unanimous, is that correct?
Yep. Well, you cannot raise it to 1,400 without having, if one person is talking about outliers, if we have one outlier, then, then it's not going to get passed, and it's, and it will stay at 1318.
So it has to be unanimous, okay.
It has to be unanimous. That's why I'm suggesting it's got to be, the compromise has to be met.
Well, the budget can be passed without being unanimous. Why does this have to be unanimous?
Yeah, I'm not sure what you're, I don't know that it-
Because it's an ordinance, and it needs two readings.
Yeah, the other thing is, the town clerk's been with us 10 years, and each, if you've ever gone to a town meeting, they have never given him an increase, or her, or him, or whatever. So I think we believe-
Wait, wait, wait. Let's decide, how, how is this, how are you supposed to vote on this? What is, Chris, is this true?
So to clarify what Bill is getting at is, because this is being introduced, and if you want to consider and pass it with both readings in one, because it's being introduced at this last one. So that's, that's what Bill's going to do, not, not because it's him or the amount. It's, it's the nature of having an ordinance and passing it all in one night, when it's being introduced tonight, all in the same night. So you need unanimous agreement to consider it, and then you'll vote on it the second time, to be able to do both in one reading. Does that make sense? Or all in one night?
All right, it doesn't, wouldn't have to be unanimous on the, to vote on it, right?
Not to pass it.
Right. You could, it just has to be unanimous to consider it.
That's right. Unanimous to consider it on this, that's right, and to be able to do two readings today.
Right.
All right, I'll second the motion, just to move us along. Any other discussion? All right, so let's do the vote. Mary Lou?
No, no.
I'm an aye. John Coker?
Aye.
John Wall?
Aye.
Mike Johnston?
Aye.
All right, so the problem we have now is that it passed, however, it had to be unanimous in order to go to second reading, correct?
It has to be unanimous to be considered as introduced in the same meeting, yes.
So it can't be considered at, for second reading?
That's right. But you have to, you have to, your dilemma is you have to set a salary for Bill. So as amended, that won't pass, yes. So as proposed, it's less, yeah.
If we don't do this, it stays the same, correct?
Yep.
Yes.
Yeah, that's right.
So is there anybody out there who'd like to change their vote?
Not if you pass, Bob, not if you pass the salary ordinance as written, though, because it's taken them up to the 17.
That, that's correct, and there's not a motion for that, right? The motion was to change it to the 1,400. So you're, you're correct, John, in that as proposed, that takes it up to what Mary Lou proposed, and as it's written.
Well, the salary ordinance takes that salary up to 17 from 1318?
1,770. 1,770 is what's written on page one of three.
Okay, well, I guess Mike, Mike, okay, so that motion and second failed. We can't consider it on second reading. So we have a salary ordinance before us that takes the clerk treasurer's salary up to $1,700, which basically means we're paying somebody who we don't know their skills, their competence, to $1,700.
And it also was not elected by the population.
Correct. So we have that before us, and I guess my concern is, is, again, talking about fiduciary responsibility to the town, to me, this, this just doesn't look acceptable. I, again, it's way too easy to spend other people's money, and here we're spending it on somebody who we don't know their skill set, we don't know their work habits.
You don't know who it is.
That's right. And Chris, what would be the implications of us not passing the salary ordinance as written?
By, by not passing that ordinance-
1318.
Yeah, Bill's, Bill's number stays what it is, but if you don't pass the ordinance, none of the other changes take effect either, so.
Do all the other employees that we agreed to earlier. Is that correct?
Any, anything that's subject to the salary ordinance, that's right.
We're going to catch 22, folks.
Haven't we made salary adjustments to employees during the year? I know we did it for the water.
Yeah.
So can't we just say this is an adjustment to salary?
Not for, not for the town clerk.
Yeah, you can't. My state statute bills has to be determined, that the clerk's office-
I understand the issue with the clerk treasurer, but what I'm saying is, the question that was just posed asked whether or not we could make the adjustments to all the other individuals, with the exception of the clerk treasurer, who's separate from that, because he's elected, and ourselves, and we are not proposing something for ourselves. But what we did say was, we would all agree that we were going to give people the, the four people that were the outliers and the other individuals, such as we discussed a few minutes ago, we were going to let that fly. Can't we just have that be an adjustment to salary starting January 1, without passing the salary ordinance until we get this clerk straightened out?
Why don't, my compromise would be, since it's going to be the same anyway, why don't you pass the salary ordinance, because we can change that and get it signed. I mean, it's easy, I got it in the computer, it will be changed. Clerk's, the clerk's salary stays the same. All of the other salary increases for, for the outliers, and for the, for the water clerks, all, all are approved, and then we, we have 3% for the street, the two-
Yeah, that's, we were trying to do a minute ago, but Mary Lou didn't want to do it on two readings, Bill, so that's why we're going to do it.
So, so then, so because there was a vote to just clean up, and as Bill proposed, if somebody adopts that as a motion, and there's- if somebody adopts that as a motion, and there's a second, and there's unanimous decision to consider that all this evening, you can do that as a, a new motion. So I, I just want to clear that up, of what Bill's proposed, that, that would allow you to move forward.
Chris, would you, would you say that again? I'm sorry.
Sorry, well, it, it, it's, bottom line is, it's just going to take somebody adopting what Bill proposes, as he termed it, compromise, and a unanimous decision, or unanimous, yes, votes in favor of considering that as the introduced ordinance this evening. It would allow you to pass it. Otherwise, by default, Bill's salary is going to stay there, no ordinance is going to get passed, and you guys will be faced with the retroactivity, or, or, you know, the authorizing bill to make those payments, and then have to fill in the blanks for the salary ordinance at some point.
What would hurt if Bill's salary was increased, since they have never made any adjustment to it in ten years? And that way, we'd at least be competitive?
Is that a question to me?
Well, it's a question to me.
Okay, yeah, all right.
Because if you look at thirty, thirty-some thousand that Bill makes, he can go to McDonald's and make more.
You know, philosophically, Mayor, I don't think anybody would have a problem with paying Bill more money. I just, I have a problem putting into our current situation, where we don't have any idea who we're going to get trust on us, to put the raise in now, and Bill's talking about leaving in February, just seems a little disingenuous. I think we don't want to do that right this minute. If Bill was saying he was staying next year, and we understood that he was going to be in the clerk treasurer position next year, then we could talk about raising him up. That's not the situation, the way it sits right now. We wind up with some political hack in there that doesn't know anything, and we're rewarding him with forty-six thousand dollars, and we wind up having to hire a town manager and an accounting firm. We're gonna look pretty ridiculous.
Certainly agree with John on that.
So in order to move this along, Bob, somehow Bob got dumped out. Hopefully he can call back in. Here he comes, I'm hoping. There he is. So, so our two options are, the way I read it from what Chris has said, is we can revisit taking the vote unanimously to do this tonight, with the understanding that the sheets that we talked about, one and three, were going to be adjusted according to what we discussed. With the exception, Mary Lou, and you and I, or whoever is going to have to decide this, we have to decide whether we're going to keep the clerk treasurer the same, or go to my fourteen-hundred. And those are our two options. We either don't pass this thing tonight, or you agree to, to let it fly with either the fourteen-hundred, or what Bill's making now.
John, where did you come up with fourteen-hundred? If you, we've always talked about the science of a survey. I read to you the minutes of the survey that I did, and we didn't even, we're not even trying to come close to what the other four towns are coming up with.
Mary Lou, what you're talking about, when you talk about the other towns, is somebody that was elected to the position, they knew what the pay was, the towns made a conscious effort to come up with those dollars for compensation for that clerk treasurer. I don't disagree with you at all on any of what you're talking about. We're not in that position right now. We're talking about rewarding somebody that we have no idea who it's going to be. It could be some incompetent that the Republicans throw at us, and we're going to be stuck with for two years. I just am not comfortable jumping it up under that situation.
Well, Bill has told me that he will stay and help, no matter what, until we can find the right person, so I think.
Talking about help, Mary Lou, I'm talking about paying forty-six thousand dollars to potentially a political hack that has no knowledge, and, and, and doesn't help us at all. We'll have to go out and hire Sender for three times what we're doing this past year, just to get over the hump. If, and even if this individual, and I would love it if Bill can stay, and if he can, that's, that's a whole different scenario. Maybe Bill needs to enlighten us a little further, but it's a little bit muddy right now as to how long he's going to stay.
All right, guys, I lost you. I'm back now, though.
You're tired.
Do we have a motion for anything, or do we have any kind, are we any closer to a resolution? Damn, I thought when I came back, you guys would have this all figured out.
Maybe Chris can explain the two options. But the way I see it, if Mary Lou holds her ground and doesn't want to come off of doing seventeen-seventy for the new clerk, then we're at an impasse. Everybody else wanted to do this tonight, with the understanding that we'd make these couple of adjustments.
Well, as I understand, we just need unanimous consent to consider it, in one, in, tonight. And so we gotta have unanimous consent, but we don't need unanimous consent to actually pass whatever it is we want to do.
That is right.
At that point, at that point, you know, we could, we could say, okay, we want the clerk's salary to be set at thirty-eight-five, or forty thousand, or thirty-five thousand, and then do, we could do with that, but we gotta have unanimous consent to even discuss that.
All right, so I'll, I'll make a motion to consider this on second reading. Is there a second to that?
No, we're, we're gonna, so, the motion will be that you are in, you want to consider this introduction in the same evening, right? So, so there'll be multiple if you do it on second reading, that's a different discussion. So the, the, the motion is to approve, to consider and approve this on first reading, ba, on the same night that it's introduced.
That's my motion. Is there a second?
Chris, could you, could you explain something? I thought, I thought you could pass something three to two on first reading. You could, if, if you had a unanimous consent to have the second reading in the same meeting.
That, that's what, that's what Coker is saying, that's what John is saying, John Coker is saying, is the unanimous to consider it. You guys didn't even get, they never got to that point.
Well, I know we haven't done that yet, but, but it was, it was passed one to four, fourteen-hundred, uh, three percent for street and water, not county clerks.
Yeah.
Same salary that's on the page for everybody else.
And to, so to clean up, or, Bill, I, I think the proper motion is to make that motion to, to consider it. And, and you're right, they do not have to, it doesn't have to be unanimous on whatever the first or second. It has to be unanimous to consider it and be able to pass it in the same night.
Yeah.
Just want to be clear on that.
Yeah.
So we have that motion and a second. Any other discussion?
And the motion, wait a minute, the motion is to.
To.
To consider this. To consider it on first reading, and to, on the night, on, because, on the same night that it's introduced.
Yeah.
But what about the, I would agree to doing something for the clerk treasurer, I think it's more than six percent. When I could, I was, no, no.
No, we're, we're doing it to consider this, then you guys can get into your discussion on the points of what he should or shouldn't get. Because you don't have to be unanimous on that.
Okay.
All right.
So it's to consider this on the.
First and second reading on the same night.
That's right.
Okay. Mary Lou?
Aye.
I'm an aye. John Coker?
Aye.
John Wall?
Aye.
Mike Johnston?
Aye.
Okay, so now, we have the second reading, and that basically what passed the first time was the fourteen-hundred dollars for the clerk treasurer, everything else the same. Any discussion on that?
I would like, is this the time now? I think it should be more than fourteen-hundred dollars.
Okay, yep, that's, that's appropriate.
I think we should at least take it up to forty, not, I mean, forty thousand a year.
Any other discussion?
I'd like to see around thirty-seven, five.
Fourteen-hundred is thirty-six, four. That's in it, yeah.
That's pretty close.
Yeah, yeah, that's good.
All right, Mary Lou?
What?
To vote up or down, this was the motion with the fourteen-hundred dollars for the clerk treasurer.
Well, I just said I would, if, I think he should be at forty, so.
Yeah, do you want to vote against this one then, or?
I wanted to see the employees get their increases, so I guess.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I guess I'll vote for it.
Okay, I'm in favor. John Wall?
Aye.
John Coker?
Aye.
Mike Johnston?
Aye.
Okay, I think we're done with that. Yeah, I'm, I'm losing my agenda. Uh-huh, here it is. Okay, salaries. Refuse contract renewal.
Yeah, yeah, we still, you know, we, we got an agreement at the last meeting to, to pay for one year. And I have, unfortunately, he promised me a call, and I did not get one, I did not reach him today. But I'm assuming, since we got the approval, that i, if it's, if it's any more than four percent, we can't approve it, but if it's four percent, that's, you know, I mean, I will try to get that to you and get it signed before the end of the, before the end of the year.
Okay.
Yeah, and Bill and I have discussed, this is Chris, what I would suggest is that, presuming that the contract matches the figures you already approved, that you authorized Dr. Lemay to sign that, and, and subject to my review.
Yeah, okay, could, maybe it's be somebody's motion to sort of make sure that.
Yep.
Yeah.
So you need a motion, Bob?
Yeah.
I make a motion that we approve the refuse contract renewal.
I'll second that, Mike.
Percent or less?
You're, are you still, okay.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, but you were frozen for a minute.
Yeah, I, I got an unstable internet connection, it says here. I think I need a new, new service. I'll talk to you guys and find out who you're using. Okay, so I'm going to make a motion to authorize myself to sign that contract, provided the increase is four percent or less.
I made it. I made the motion.
You made it.
Oh, you did, okay.
And Mike Johnston seconded.
Okay, I got kicked off here. All right. Mary Lou, you're in favor of that motion?
Aye.
I'm in favor. John Coker?
Aye.
John Wall?
Aye.
Mike Johnston?
Aye.
Okay, before we go to new business, then, Mary Lou, I'm going to send you that letter telling you what I need to see, or what we need to see regarding the benefit package.
I already found it.
Oh, you did? Okay, great.
Don't worry about it.
Super, okay. New business, resolution twenty-twenty-one dash zero-zero-four A. Modification, resolution twenty-twenty-one dash zero-zero-four to approve ARP bonuses for Town of Long Beach employees. Bill, you want to explain why we're doing this?
We have, uh, the convenient wisdom says that the, this, the feds prefer that the, that they set, that the salary increases or the, or the bonuses be in the, in the form of, of hourly rates, not to exceed thirteen dollars an hour. So we, we, we did not judge who got, you know, we didn't make different, everybody got a thousand. So we just are saying that a hundred, we're doing a hundred hours at ten dollars an hour, and that, that, that matches what we've already paid the employees, but it's a, it's a, it's a better form for, for our federal friends. So I think we need a motion to approve that resolution.
I make a motion.
Okay, I'll second it. Any discussion? I'm in favor. Mary Lou?
Aye. Aye.
John Wall?
Aye.
John Coker?
Aye.
Mike Johnston?
Aye.
And does that need a second reading also, Chris?
Resolution.
Oh, good, okay.
Okay, resolution, the resolution, this is, is strictly a housekeeping thing, because Chief Swistic was not able to, uh, to be involved in the salary. And he worked really hard this year to maintain the salaries, and so, basically, all I did was, the, the four components that he was managing were straight time, overtime, holiday pay, and part-time officer, or auxiliary officers, as they are called in the software system. So what I did was I took thirty-six thousand away from, from one bucket, and put it into, in three different pieces into the other, not changing the, the total sal, not changing the bonus that was, the, the budget that was approved by the State Board of Accounts. But when you look at the final numbers, which I, you will see at the January meeting, we, all of those have surpluses instead of negatives. So the, the total, he is under budget for those four, for those things, and so that's the only reason I did that. So it, it has little meaning probably to anybody but Bill Defuniak and Mark Swistic. And, but, but that's the purpose of the meeting. If you look at that, it's thirty-six thousand minus, and then thirty-six thousand dollars plus to those four.
Motion to approve the resolution.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, and that's twenty-twenty-one dash zero-zero-six. I'll second that. Mary Lou?
Aye.
I'm an aye. John Coker?
Aye.
Mike Johnston?
Aye.
John Wall?
Aye.
Thought I'd change the order just to make sure everybody was still awake. Any public comments? Any council comments?
Happy New Year!
Happy New Year, everybody. Claims approval.
Claims, claims approval. Check number one-eight-five-eight-nine through one-eight-six-two-one, totaling two-hundred-and-nineteen-thousand-eight-hundred-and-sixty-eight dollars and twenty-five cents. And the payroll for December of twenty-twenty-one was seventy-three, comma, four-nine-four, point ninety-eight. Do I have a motion to approve the claims?
I make a.
Can I make one? Bill, can I ask you one question?
Oh, sure.
Did you need us to make a, some sort of a, an approval of that stop twenty-eight construct, wherein there was a donation, and then you're paying the contractor? Is that part of this, or are you okay on that?
Well, I, I'm okay on it, but maybe we could ask Chris, but I, I, you know, basically, I talked to Carl Sender about that, and he agreed, I said, you know, normally, you don't add any money to the Go-Bond Fund. It's money that we borrow, but because we're actually paying out of the Go-Bond Fund, I'm going to put that ninety-six thousand dollars into the Go-Bond Fund, and, but, you know, I, I don't know if we, we need. I, Bob Lemay has already signed that thing, and I've already gotten the signature from, from the, from the Denver family, so.
Okay, I, maybe I misinterpreted, but I thought, I thought Sender and/or Chris suggested that we had to make some sort of formal approval.
Probably is a good idea.
Yeah, I, 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 my concern, or recommendation was to make sure that we just, we don't have any State Board of Accounts. The, the premise is, certainly, you're, you're welcome to have that donation and spend those funds, but in terms of where they go and approving that, just want to make sure from an accounting standpoint. So it certainly will not hurt the, the council to make that decision and authorize that expenditure.
Yeah, the, the only thing that would be, Chris, will be, the only thing that Carl and I have discussed is in twenty-twenty-two, you know, like everything else, when people hand us money, we have to, we have to, we have to get approval. So we will have to have a hearing to say that we can spend the hundred thousand dollar donation on town stuff.
That is, that's it. That's, that's right.
So, so, so I may be a motion to accept the, to accept the, the donation with a, with a appropriation hearing to be held in twenty-twenty-two.
And we can do that at the next town council meeting?
Uh, yeah, we could do it at the next council meeting, but we, but we should, we should approve the, the donation, because it's all, because it's coming in twenty-twenty-one.
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
Is there a second?
I will second it, Mike.
Any discussion?
One last point I want to make, Bill, is that, is that expenditure in that line item for Woodruff, or is, you haven't paid them yet?
I, that, that, I have paid them, that, that hundred, if you look at the check register, that, that hundred and forty, that hundred and forty-something thousand dollar bill is the ninety-six thousand, because we're going to pay him this year, and that money is budgeted, we budgeted a million dollars. So we still have money in the, you know, in the, in the, so we don't have to, we don't have to have an additional appropriation this year. But we're, but next year, we're gonna, you know, we're, we're going from one million to one point one, in, in a manner of speaking. So we will need to approve the extra hundred thousand, and, but, but there's nothing left to do, except that we're approving, taking the money. And, and so, so that, and that forty-seven thousand was the two invoices, because the system pays one check. So the check was stop twenty-eight, and then forty-seven thousand dollars for stop twenty-one, for the completion of stop twenty-one. Okay?
All right, so, so there's a motion to take the money from the Denvers and spend it? Uh, I made it, I think it was seconded by Mary Lou, I believe.
Oh, Mike.
Mike!
Mike, okay, I'm sorry. All right, I'm in favor. Mary Lou?
Aye.
John Coker?
Aye.
John Wall?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
All right, now we have claims approval. I move to approve the claims that Bill just read through. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? I'm in favor. Mary Lou?
Aye.
John Wall?
Aye.
John Coker?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Okay, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I second it.
All favors say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Night, everybody, have a happy.
Happy New Year!
Yeah, have a good time at the wedding.
Oh, yeah. Keep my mask on.
Yes.
Yes.